We were called to order the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, 7:00 PM. Board Meeting Room 39 Bank Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia. Roll call.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
Present.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here. I would ask that you'd observe a moment of silence with me, please. Thank you. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I'd like to do it a little different tonight. We got a lot of our scouts in the audience. Would you come up front and lead us in the pledge, please?
Let's give my hand as a thank you.
Thank you all. Are there items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to add the following items to tonight's agenda. Add planning commission appointment Tunstall District Gary Oaks is item 7K. Add Pennsylvania County Schools Vote Yes for PCS Presentation is item 8B. Add Hardy Petroleum 100th Year Anniversary Presentation is item 8C. Finance Committee Recommendations is item 7L. And also add Personnel Closed Session to tonight's agenda. Legal Authority Code 2.2-3711A1. Subject matter: County Administrator and County Attorney. Purpose: Review of County Administrator and County Attorney's Performance Evaluation.
Mr. Farmer, can you repeat 8C? I didn't get that one.
Hardy Petroleum 100th Year Anniversary Presentation.
Thank you.
Second?
Got a motion and second any discussion on a motion to amend the agenda? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Hey, Scott, I'm gonna need a cord.
Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Ingram. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and second any discussion on a motion? Okay, hearing none, please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. Can I get a motion concerning the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Dr. Miller, seconded by... Was that you, Mr. Ingram?
Me.
No, sir, but I can...
Mr. Scares, thank you. Any discussion on a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, please cast your votes. And before we get to presentations, I want to take this opportunity to recognize a few folks in the audience. Mr. Jesse Barksdale's here, the newly elected Representative Banister District taking over in January. Thank you, Mr. Barksdale, for being here. We also have George Henderson from the School Board in here in the audience tonight. Appreciate you being here, Mr. Henderson. We have...
Darryl Dalton on the front row right here.
Yeah, I see. Mr. Dalton, I didn't see you right there.
Yes, sir.
New representative for the Callens-Grutner District. We're looking forward to serving with you. And we have Will Pace, the Mayor of Chatham. And we also have one of our prior board members, Ms. Brenda Bowman, who was chairman of the Board of Supervisors at one point. Glad to have all of you here. Also see that Dr. Jones, Superintendent of Pennsylvania County Schools, is in attendance. And I think actually coming in the door, I see him in the hall anyway, is Mr. Tim Cheshire from the Dan River Ringgold District, new representative taking office in January. We're happy to have them all here tonight. They actually was here and participated also in the work session. And they got their first indoctrination of the work sessions. And I hope they enjoyed it and look forward to serving with them in the future. Thank you. Thank you again to everyone. All right, we're down to presentations, and the first one is Danville, Pennsylvania County Community Services Annual Report from Mr. Jim Bebo. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Vanderheide, which is a board member over there.
That's exactly right. Chairman Warren, Members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Smithman and staff. As you all know me as Kim Vanderheide, Finance Director, I'm also a member and current Vice Chair of the Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services Board of Directors. DPCS is a political subdivision created by Danville City Council and the Board of Supervisors in 1972 to provide top-quality behavioral health developmental and prevention services to all residents of the city and county. Tonight, you all have this nice, pretty blue pamphlet that's been placed in front of you. Jimbo Bebo made sure that you all got a copy of that tonight. We would love for you to read that at your leisure. It's lots of pictures and lots of good things and lots of great stories in there. So it is with great pleasure and excitement tonight that I present to you DPCS's annual report for fiscal year FY21. Our annual report theme is #PCSStrong. Throughout social media, the hashtag symbol connects trends and people together where there is a common thread. The entire world has lived and experienced a COVID-19 pandemic for nearly two years, and this year's theme is a reflection on and recognition of an entire year of DPCS's operations providing critical services for our community without waiver. We are #DPCSStrong. Briefly tonight, I want to tell you about the three threads or reasons why #DPCSStrong is such an important message to the community. These threads about people, services, and staff convey how deeply committed DPCS is to offering services for everyone residing in our community. They also provide an opportunity for the Board of Directors to recognize an outstanding team of service providers and support staff that made and continue to make tremendous sacrifices to maintain critical services for thousands of people in our community. This summary tonight will highlight for the supervisors and county citizens all the activities of DPCS in and for our community. The first thread in #DPCSStrong is all about those we serve. In the annual report, three individuals shared their successes while working with DPCS, and I encourage you to read them. At the height of the pandemic, providing face-to-face services became instantly and chaotically disrupted, which quickly turned into a new normal. Nevertheless, DPCS services reached more than 5,000 individuals in our clinical treatment and prevention outreach programs and campaigns. DPCS shifted many of these services to telehealth, and in many instances, the expanded use of telehealth improved accessibility and engagement for individuals previously hesitant to participate in services. Despite the availability of telehealth, there remained many individuals who needed continued face-to-face services that are impossible to provide via telehealth. DPCS continued to provide these services without pause, with staff often wrapped up in personal protective equipment for an entire shift, even while they worried about their own families at home. They are #DPCSStrong. The second thread in #DPCSStrong is all about our services. Operating approximately 50 unique programs, DPCS adapts and changes services across its developmental services, behavioral health, and prevention services divisions for adults and children in order to meet our community needs. Throughout the pandemic, many of these programs continued operations in traditional ways, but with a new focus on health and safety protections, such as our residential crisis and other 24/7 operations. Many other programs, such as community-based and/or outpatient operations, shifted to telehealth models of service, meeting the individual's needs in new and unique ways that also focused on health and safety. The staff's dedication to these programs, providing more than 122,000 distinct services to people in need during a global pandemic, demonstrated that their fellow citizens are very important to them. This is #DPCSStrong. The third and final thread in #DPCSStrong is about our workforce. DPCS has a workforce of almost 300 dedicated professionals who are an integral part of the city of Danville in Pennsylvania County. We live, work, and play here and are completely invested in the people and places around us. Throughout the pandemic, DPCS recognized staff were invested in the work to be done, and DPCS fully supported its staff along the way. A focus on the health and welfare of everyone became priority one in the pandemic, along with providing a sense of safety, ongoing education and direction, flexibility for work-life-family balance, and an endless supply of personal protective supplies. This is #DPCSStrong. On behalf of our volunteer Citizen Board of Directors and the staff, it is an honor and a privilege to share this information with you tonight. In closing, I would also like you... Thank you for appointing eight members from Pennsylvania County, including myself as a member of the Callens-Grutner District, to the DPCS Board of Directors. I'd also like to recognize our past chairmans that are here tonight, Mr. Bob Warren and Mr. Jesse Barksdale. We thank you for your service to DPCS, and it is our honor and pleasure, of course, as well as they will attest to, to serve the community in this capacity. We appreciate your confidence and ongoing support. DPCS's Executive Director, Mr. Jim Bebo, he is here tonight to assist me if you all should have any questions. Thank you so much.
Any questions from any board members? Anybody got any questions? I don't have a question, but with all due respect to Mr. Barksdale, I think I can echo the same sentiments he has, because we actually served together on that board. It's amazing. I had no idea how much work and how involved they are in our community and what great work they do. And I had the pleasure this week, Jim, of talking to one of your new board members, who she just came on. Actually, I think Mr. Ingram, appointee, had the pleasure of talking with her, and she said, from the orientation, she had no idea. And, you know, she obviously knew about the organization, but she had no idea the depth and everything that you all do. So on behalf of, I think, our entire board, I can say, thank you so much for what you all do and the organization does. And from two prior chairmen of the board, we appreciate the great work. So thank you. Thank you all very much. Okay, we had an added item tonight to presentations, and that's from our outstanding school system. The Pennsylvania County school system is, in our humble opinion, second to none, 100% accredited. We always like to brag a little bit on our school system. So we have Dr. Jones here, and Gail Bart's gonna make a presentation. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Hello, my name is Gail Bartz, and I was a volunteer for the Pennsylvanians for a Brighter Future Committee, also probably better known as the Vote Yes for PCS. I have a report from Dr. Martha Walker, who was the campaign chair for this committee. She could not be here tonight because she had other prior commitments. So thank you, Chairman Warren, for our board members, Mr. Smithman, and for administrative staff here for this opportunity. I will read Dr. Walker's letter. On November 9th, I had an opportunity to give a report on the campaign efforts for the 1% sales tax increase. My report summarized the activity on this referendum. Tonight, I am very grateful for the opportunity to share this information with members of the county's governing body. On Monday, August 16th, I agreed to serve as the campaign chair for the 1% sales tax increase referendum question that would be on the 2021 ballot. I was driven to say yes because I am fully invested in supporting Pennsylvania County. I know that when our students are successful, our county will be successful and economic growth will be a reality. On Thursday, August 19th, the first meeting of the Pennsylvanians for the Better Future Team was held. With nine weeks before the November 2nd vote, we were charged with establishing a plan, securing funding, building a network, and telling the story. Everyone stepped up and made the impossible possible. The superintendent, Dr. Jones, spoke to numerous organizations, including the Danville, Pennsylvania County Chamber of Commerce, the Chatham Rotary, and other civic groups. Members of the team met with local fire departments and community groups seeking their support. We used social and print media, billboards, yard signs, wonder cleans, face-to-face conversations, and electronic messages to tell the story. Many of us met people where they were, including football games, soccer matches, churches, and other community activities. We presented at PTO meetings, both in person and virtual. I presented to the School Board in September and to the Board of Supervisors on October 19th, requesting the support of each elected official. Eleven individuals and two companies invested $14,750 in this effort. In addition, we received $2,500 to fund our collaborative efforts with Danville's Vote for Yes, DPS campaign. Our team was responsible stewards of these funds to create the most impact for every dollar. I am personally forever grateful to the amazing campaign team and to our superintendent, Mark Jones. Each member contributed all they had in support of this effort. It just wasn't enough, though. I am still struggling with the question of why did this happen? Has our fully accredited school system lost the support of the community? Were people rejecting another tax? Were the politics of the county confusing the issue of the school's progress? What was it? On Monday, November 8th, an email went out from our team to members of this community asking for our voters to help us understand what happened and why 50% of our community said no. The questionnaire is simply a tool for guiding the conversation on what to do next. The population sample is not large enough or inclusive of those who do not have access to social media or email communication. Therefore, the results are not statistical significance, but the comments are informative. Within 24 hours, 97 responses had been received. As of this morning, today, 146 responses were received. The majority indicated that they voted no because they didn't want another tax. Others questioned how Pennsylvania County Schools were using the available funds, funds such as lottery and CARES funds, and others reported a lack of trust in the governing body to use the new tax dollars as required. These were the three main responses from the survey. On Tuesday, November 9th, the Pennsylvania County School Board voted unanimously to request a recount of the election results and, if necessary, seek permission to place the question on the 2022 ballot. Also, Dr. Walker shared that 52% of the 146 responders would like for Pennsylvania County to be given a second opportunity to vote on the 1% sales tax question. To me, that's saying that the percentage may indicate that some of the voters just didn't fully understand the question that was on the ballot. So tonight, we are here to seek your support for both the recount and, if necessary, adding the 1% sales tax increase question to the 2022 ballot. This report was put together by Dr. Walker, the campaign chair. Dr. Jones?
Ms. Bartz, thank you very much for being here this evening. Thank you for all that you've done throughout this committee. I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for passing a resolution last year, asking the Circuit Court Judge to place this on the ballot. So thank you very much for that. Also, I'd like to thank our school board for their part that they played in this as well. Would like to let you all know this evening that we would look forward to the opportunity to place this on the ballot for next school year if the recount does not find 23 votes for us. Again, thank you all. I appreciate Dr. Walker, her work, Mr. and Mrs. Farrell Edmonds, and Dr. Lillian Holland. They were the chairs, the chairs and the treasurers of the Pennsylvanians for a Brighter Future. Just the tireless work that they and committee members, and I see a committee member right here as well, did over the course of three or four months. They've spent a lot of time in our community, and just we feel very good about the responses that we had from the community. We feel like the community truly supports Pennsylvania County Schools, and thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Any questions from the board? Any questions, any comments? Anybody got anything?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're down to 8C. Presentation for Hardy Petroleum 100th Year Anniversary. They're in attendance, right?
Several of them are in attendance.
Okay, so Mr. Ingram's gonna make the presentation, but I'd ask all the board members to go down front. And Mr. Ingram?
Yes, sir.
100 years, but this company pre-annexation?
It was.
They were in Pennsylvania County then, correct?
Before the late, great Land Theft Act of 1988, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. That's what I wanted to make public aware of.
Can I have a...
Yes, I can.
Josh? It's not...
Me too, me too. This is one of the cool parts about this job, is to recognize people and corporations and families that have done so much for our community. And Billy, it is such an honor to have you and your family here. And before I read this resolution, I wanted to tell you something I never forgot. Out of the 100 years that y'all have been serving the citizens of Danville and Pennsylvania County, I've been a customer for about 31. And hopefully, I'll double that. But one winter, everybody was losing power and losing propane and gas and everything, including me, because I didn't fill up before the ice storm hit. So I put my order in, and me and Debbie snuggled up, and it was getting mighty cold, but I won't complain about the snuggling part. But about quarter to 12, I hear a truck out front, and I see this figure coming across the yard, almost like Santa Claus. And I thought, man, that's Hardy Petroleum. And I was looking for one of the regular truck drivers, and it wasn't the truck driver, it was one of the owners, Billy Hardy. And he drug that line across my front yard and around the back of the house and filled me up, and we were good to go. And I told you thank you, but I want to say thank you again publicly, because that meant so much for you guys to work around the clock, keep people warm, that should have filled up before the ice storm hit. And I do apologize, but I appreciate that. This is a resolution 2021-1102, Hardy Petroleum's 100th Year Anniversary. The following resolution was adopted at the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting on November 16th, 2021. Whereas Hardy Petroleum is located at 1912 Westover Drive in Danville, Virginia, and whereas in 1921, Henry Hardy started W. Henry Hardy Company on the principles of honesty, hard work, and dedication to customers and employees. And whereas the office operated out of a small white building on Westover Drive in 1970, the office was expanded to accommodate needed storage. And whereas over the years, Hardy Petroleum has progressed from only delivering fuel oil to a variety of services, which include delivering fuel oil and propane gas to residential, commercial, and business customers. And whereas surrounding farmers, and whereas they also specialize in selling and installing of gas logs, selling of gas grills, installation of gas, outdoor lighting, and delivery of gasoline to multiple pure convenience stores. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board applauds Hardy Petroleum for their hard work and dedication that brought them to their 100th Year Anniversary, and we wish them many more years of unparalleled success. Given and adopted under my hand the 16th day of November 2021, Robert W. Warren, Chairman of Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors...
Thank you very much.
Get in where I fit in.
Yeah, I got, can, can I do me too?
Thank you, Caitlin.
All right, I was just informed by our clerk, Ms. McCluster, that we have no signatures for hearing of the citizens tonight, so we'll dispense with the reading of that. We're down to public hearings. Ten A, other public hearings. Each person, addressing the board under a public hearing, shall step up, give his or her name and district, and or his or her place of residency for non-county citizens, in an audible tone of voice for the record. And unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to ten minutes. Speakers shall conduct their remarks, conclude their remarks at that time, unless the consent of the board is affirmatively given to expend the speakers allotted time. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. We're down to public hearing, item number one, revisions to PCC 35-14C, utility-scale solar energy facility. And this is Ms. Ragsdale. We'll open the public hearing at 7:32.
Staff was asked to bring proposals to amend our solar ordinance before the Board of Supervisors to better regulate solar across the county while also allowing us to take advantage of some additional measures that the state has added into the code, allowing siting agreements, et cetera, for these projects. So staff has presented in your packet, proposed changes to the ordinance, and I'll briefly go through some of the highlighted changes. There is one major change. Staff, currently, our ordinance requires at least five miles between approved solar projects. Staff is proposing to reduce that to one mile. However, staff is proposing to greatly increase buffering requirements. Currently, the ordinance only requires a fifteen-foot wide landscape buffer around the exterior of the project. Staff is proposing to increase that to a hundred-foot wide. Additionally, this is a staggered row of landscape trees and bushes. The current ordinance only requires a fifteen-foot minimum height at maturity. Staff is proposing that at least one of those rows be increased to a minimum of twenty-five feet at maturity. Additionally, we have, we're requiring that landscape renderings be sealed by a registered landscape architect. That's not something that we currently require. And we are putting additional measures in place to ensure that all conditions of their special use permit are met prior to them producing power for the first time. While staff tries our best to ensure that they meet all conditions before they produce power, sometimes that falls through the cracks, so we want to bake it into our ordinance to ensure that that does not happen and that we can make sure that any conditions placed on their special use permit are met prior to them producing electricity. Additionally, staff is proposing to add additional language into the decommissioning requirements, that the property be returned to a condition that's conducive to the prior use. One thing I did fail to mention is that we are, we are putting in our ordinance that, as allowed by state code, the applicant would need to initiate negotiations for a siting agreement with the Board of Supervisors before they could submit rezoning or special use permit applications. And I know that while it's not in what was presented, staff has received comments regarding the view shed protection around projects and construction. So if that's something that the board would like to add into the ordinance, I do have some language that I could propose for that as well. Staff would recommend that you add language such as a view shed protection plan shall be submitted and approved by the Director of Community and Development prior to the issuance of permits, identifying appropriate measures that will be taken throughout construction to protect the view sheds surrounding the project. And staff would, we would propose that that be added under section 35-141D.
Can you read that one more time, please?
A view shed protection plan shall be submitted and approved by the Director of Community Development prior to the issuance of permits, identifying appropriate measures that will be taken throughout construction to present, to protect the view sheds surrounding the project.
Okay. Any questions? From the board before, from Ms. Ragsdale before we hear from the citizens?
I think that's all I've got. I, I'm on the planning commission, and a lot of this, the solar farms, they have to come through us first, and, and I think it's a very significant thing that we need to do, increase the buffer because of the view from the road. And I think we're in a learning curve, and, and we're seeing some communities that are upset because of what they are seeing. So, yeah, I think it's very important that we take care of this. So, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Hang close, because we're gonna probably want you back.
No one signed up this week, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, no one signed up, so come back, Ms. Ragsdale. Any other questions from Ms. Ragsdale? This is more for general knowledge for our public viewing and for citizens. This actual changes in resolution protects the citizens more and certainly protects our taxpayers' interest at a much higher level because of legislative changes. Is that accurate, Ms. Ragsdale?
That's correct. Siting agreements allow for us to negotiate upfront payments and tax, tax scales, so how we would tax these projects differently than they have in the past. So we can do that through an agreement that's signed to make sure that we, the county is receiving the most financial impact from these projects as possible.
And, and for our citizens, a lot of the projects that are already up and in existence, we didn't have the ability because of state regulations to put these site plans and everything in place to protect our citizens and protect the taxpayers' revenue. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. Siting agreements are a relatively new thing in the state of Virginia. We're only aware of a couple throughout the state that have actually been approved to date. So this is something that's new, so, you know, we have not been able to use that in the past. And additionally, based on interconnection dates, a lot of projects are exempt from taxation at higher rates. So there are large portions of their, their SUS value that's actually exempt from taxation. So there have been changes, changes recently that have adjusted that scale, so we are able to receive a greater financial impact from these projects currently.
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale. You do a great job.
Yes, she does.
I wanted to truly get that out to our citizens. I know that you've communicated all of that to the entire board multiple times, so that's why we were, were not asking, asking a lot of questions, but I wanted our folks in attendance to know what's going on, and certainly anybody viewing to, to know what's going on. We're, we're protecting our county tax dollars and protecting the citizens that will live around any potential projects in the future. So I think that's some real important, really good work on your part and your staff. We appreciate it very much. Anybody else got anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
No one signed up, so I'll close the public hearing at 7:40 and entertain the board's pleasure.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve the revisions to the county's solar ordinance as attached and presented, and anything additional that we have added on in our meetings.
Motion made, and second, any discussion on the motion? This is another item that we did discuss at our work session, so it's not being taken lightly at all. Okay, please cast your votes.
Yeah, you got it.
Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're down to public hearing number two, redistricting plans, public comments. Mr. Arnold, and I'll open that at 7:41.
All right, as the board is already aware, with being 2021, it's state statute, it's mandated by law that localities go through the redistricting process for every year ending in one. So, and we, like we had talked about previously in the work session, this particular year presented some challenges for us in terms of, mainly in terms of getting the data needed to be able to redistrict the county's local election districts, both the Board of Supervisors as well as the school board. As a result of that, we decided, due to that short timeframe that we had to work with, county staff had been following the procurement process and contracted Arc Bridge Consulting and Training Services for this year's redistricting project. The statement of work that we provided to Arc Bridge included adhering to the criteria and guidance that was adopted during a resolution at the August Board of Supervisors' meeting in the preparation of three redistricting plans, with one of those plans to include a majority-minority district, which currently we have in place, and that would be the Bannister District. So the public comment period is underway. We're just over halfway through it. It started on November the first and extends until the thirtieth of this month. And tonight is the public hearing for the Board of Supervisors to receive comments from county citizens. And as you see up on the screens, those are the three redistricting plans, Plans A, B, and C, that have been prepared by our consultant, Arc Bridge, and they're also in attendance as well. And so if there are any questions for county staff or Arc Bridge, we're happy to field them after the public comment period. And then after the thirty-day public comment period, the Board of Supervisors would select a plan for adoption, and then that proposed plan would be advertised in the newspaper at least two weeks before adoption. And right now, we're looking at the adoption date being December 21st at the December Board of Supervisors' meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Arnold before we take public comments? Any board member got any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Again, we talked about this over at 4:30 also. Anyone sign up?
Yes, Henry Myers.
Good evening. I'm not used to talking to people behind my back, but I would like, I'm glad to be here. I left home about six o'clock and hit a deer and had to return home, but pray to the Lord I'm here now. I'm grateful to be here, standing under these circumstances. My name is Henry Myers. I will be speaking for the NAACP. Good evening, members of the board, county administrator, and citizens of Pennsylvania County. We, the members of the Pennsylvania County NAACP, thank you for the opportunity to speak on the redistricting following the 2021 census. The redistricting is required every ten years after the census. The redistricting helps determine where our monies go and, to some degree, who will decide to spend these monies. There are some basic laws or directions that must be adhered to when drawing the line for redistricting. These laws or directions include nearly equal population in each district, or that the district does not deviate from the average more or less than five percent. Districts will be compact and contiguous, and boundaries shall preserve communities of interest as much as possible. Some other things that the county directed the contract to do included maintaining present existing boundary lines for the districts and keeping incumbents in separate districts and in their current districts as much as possible. I could not find any law that made this reference, so I would ask that the county, you know, do some research on this, and at the next redistricting, which I'm talking ten years now, that we be sure that we're in accordance with the law on that particular part. The board and the county should give some research on that. The contract was directed to examine the census, the census, and draw up three plans. The county contracted Arc Bridge Consulting and Training to do the redistricting. We would like to recognize, we, the NAACP, would like to recognize Arc Bridge Consulting and Training, for there were an assistant county administrator, Mr. Dave Arnold, for the assistance that they gave us, Mr. Sam Mather, and Ms. Pretty Major, I hope I'm saying that right, from Arc Bridge, at our request, contacted us, gave us the opportunity to question them, and particularly, again, Arc Bridge was very helpful in explaining what they had done and going over and answering any questions that we had, and I think we are prepared to give you a pretty good input based on that, and it certainly answered questions for us and let us understand some things that's going on in this particular census. What did this census show, and what does this imply for redistricting? The first thing we note is the total population of the county. It has decreased since 2010. The population decreased about three thousand people. This means that the average number of people in each district will decrease slightly from what it was in the redistricting after two, 2010 census. We note that the population of the county
board, county administrator, and citizens of Pennsylvania County. We, the members of the Pennsylvania County NAACP, thank you for the opportunity to speak on the redistricting following the 2021 census. The redistricting is required every 10 years after the census. The redistricting helps determine where our monies go and, to some degree, who will decide to spend these monies. There are some basic laws or directions that must be adhered to when drawing the line for redistricting. These laws or directions include nearly equal population in each district, or that the district does not deviate from the average more or less than 5%. Districts will be compact and contiguous, and boundary share preserve communities of interest as much as possible. Some other things that the county directed the contractor to do included maintaining present existing boundary lines for the districts and keeping incumbents in separate districts and in their current districts as much as possible. I could not find any law that made this reference. So I would ask that the county, you know, do some research on this. And at the next redistricting, which I'm talking 10 years now, that we be sure that we're in accordance with the law on that particular part. The board and the county should give some research on that. The contractor was directed to examine the census and draw up three plans. The county contracted ArcBridge Consulting and Training to do the redistricting. We would like to recognize, we, the NAACP, would like to recognize ArcBridge Consulting and Training for their work. And Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Dave Arnold, for the assistance that they gave us. Mr. Sam Mathur and Ms. Pretty Major, I hope I'm saying that correctly, from ArcBridge, at our request, contacted us, gave us the opportunity to question them. And particularly, again, ArcBridge was very helpful in explaining what they had done and going over and answering any questions that we had. And I think we are prepared to give you a pretty good input based on that. And it certainly answered questions for us and let us understand some things that's going on in this particular census. What did this census show? And what does this imply for redistricting? The first thing we note is the total population of the county. It has decreased since 2010. The population decreased about 3,000 people. This means that the average number of people in each district will decrease slightly from what it was in the redistricting after 2010 census. We note that the population of the county is still migrating to the southern end of the county. This means that the district in the northern end of the county must extend their lines further to the south to enable these districts to approach the average that is needed for each district to maintain that requirement by law. This means that the district on the southern part of the county will become smaller in size. The census also showed that the percent of blacks in the county is decreasing. The percent of blacks for the county in 1990 census was approximately 33 or 34 percent. The percent of blacks in the 2020 census showed that the black population in the county is now down to about 20.1 percent. The data also shows the black population is scattered throughout the county. With a trend of decreasing population, the county and school system need to take a good look at their long-term plans and reevaluate them based on the population trends. As far as the three plans presented, we, the NAACP, support Plan A and believe that it is the best plan for the county. One of our main concerns was that the county not dilute the black vote. It is better for this county to be represented by all of its citizens than for a large group of one citizen to feel left out of the decision-making process. Plan A allows for the best chance for blacks to have representation, but it is not a guarantee. At least it gives a fighting chance for blacks to have representation. Plans B and C just totally dilute the black vote. We noted a discrepancy with the data that involved the state and the prison count in the population. I am hoping that the county administrator and the board will pursue this issue through our representatives and Richmond, and this issue will be fully resolved before the 2030 census. And finally, we, the NAACP, would like to thank our leader for coordinating efforts of this committee in studying the census and analyzing these redistricting plans. And finally, thank you to all the citizens that attended the meeting and gave their input. And we would like to recognize again, Mr. Mathur, Ms. Mathur, and ArcBridge training for the great job that they did. And also, again, Mr. Arnold and also Mr. Caleb Ayers, who provided us information as we seek. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Anyone got any questions for Mr. Myers? Thank you, Mr. Myers.
That's all.
That's all? Okay. Mr. Arnold, come back up. See if anybody's got any questions. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Arnold?
I have one.
Okay. Mr. Farmer.
So it's my understanding we'll have to vote between now and end of the year. When will it go into effect? Will it be January 1? In terms of a new?
There is a, basically, a state attorney general is who we submit the adopted plan to. And then they certify it. I believe it's a minimum of 60 days out from when we submit it to them. But I can, I'd like to confirm that timeframe with you, but it is not effective as of January 1, is my understanding. I'm pretty sure it's 60 days out. Yeah.
But still relatively soon. I mean, that's in the first quarter of next year, it'll be, yes.
I believe that is, yes.
Thank you.
It would certainly be, to follow up on Mr. Farmer's, it would certainly be before any new elections would come up.
Yes, it has to be. Correct. Yes.
Just, of course, want to clear it up for the public. Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:53. And I think we determined we were going to take no action until post 11:30. Is that correct? Give everybody a chance. Because we've got it out on the website and all for input from any citizens or anything. So we wanted to not make any decisions until everybody had a chance to comment on it. And that will probably require us to have a called meeting at some point in early December. And that certainly will be publicized significantly so everybody can be in attendance if they wish to. Thank you. Okay, any unfinished business, Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
Any new business?
No, sir.
Any matters left from work session?
No, sir.
Moving right along pretty good. We're down to board members' reports. I'll start with Mr. Ingram.
Oh, my, that was quick. If you're a race fan, about this time of year, they go through what's called silly season. That's where they trade drivers and teams and cars and owners. And we just went through our own version of silly season, and I sure am glad that it's over with. But what I wanted to strongly encourage all of us to do is look toward forgiveness. Come together in unity as one body and be about the people's business to serve them as we pledged we would do. And I appreciate everybody's consideration on that. I wanted to thank the Boy Scouts for being here. Mr. Martin, good to see you, sir. It's always, and Steve, always a pleasure to see our young folks in action. And I understand they got some pretty cool projects in the works. So anytime I can help you, you know, you can call on me. Also, I wanted to thank Mr. Morris Stowe for his years of service on the planning commission. I made the decision to, after talking with him, to appoint someone else. But I do want to thank him. He told me he's only 82, and he's been on the planning commission since it started. So that's a long time. And finally, I want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. It's a very special time of year. And may you have a very nice holiday season thereafter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Farmer.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If anyone has been down Main Street Gretna in the last few days, you'll notice a brand-new, beautiful mural that's been painted on one of our Main Street buildings. This mural was a project that Revitalization for Greater Gretna got behind. It was one of their current members and former mayor, Joel Shelton, that he had a division and pushed that this project be completed. RGG, Gretna Merchants, Diana Burkholder, and Rich Armstrong, they all had funding input into this project. And it's just a great new look scene of an old depiction of what Old Town Gretna looked like back in the day. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. We'll move down to Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity. It's not often, because I'm on the northern end. I'm up north. And it's not often that we have folks from my end attend the meetings unless it's a tax increase. I'm just going to tell you, just like it is. But it's a privilege of mine. I had a good friend of mine call me today, and he said, I'd like to come to the meeting. I'd really like to get involved. And it's Dennis Delap. He's on the second row. Dennis will raise his hand. Dennis, he's in the Stanton River District. He retired from Abbott Laboratories. Good friend of mine. Dennis is a very, very good auctioneer. He can sell ice to an Eskimo. He can sell anything. And (laugh) he just sold it. Dennis did an auction for the pet center last year, and that went really, really well. And thank you, Dennis, for coming tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you so much for being involved. What a blessing it was to see the Boy Scouts here. When you guys got right here and led, it just brought chills to me to look over there and see, and I was doing this, and these guys was doing this. And it made me feel good, and I'm proud of you guys. Thank you so much for everything you do. Folks, when we leave tonight, mention how much you appreciate them. So many kids are going to the wayside, and these kids right here are on the right track. Thank you so much for the leaders, for showing up and doing what you do. Proud of every one of you. And thank you. Yeah, we can give them a hand. That's good. Also, we've got Thanksgiving coming up, and just a very, very important time of the year to just stop and look back at where we come from in the last couple of years and just give thanks to where we're at now. And I think we can all do that. We was in a meeting during work session, and I was talking to Jesse Barxdale. Jesse and I talked. And he was asking me about what we was going to do for Thanksgiving. I was asking him. He said his whole family lives basically on the same road, and they're going to all get together. And just getting together as a family and having, showing love to each other. And just having a family unit there together means the world. I mean, you could give somebody money, or you could give them family, and some would prefer the family. And I encourage you to get together with family, give thanks for everything you have. And I could get an amen after that one right there, but I'm good. But thank you all for coming out to our meetings. It's encouraging to know that the people are interested. And I want to thank each one of you guys for put a concerted effort just to be here tonight. Thank you so much. Mark Jones, appreciate everything you do for the schools. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Dr. Miller.
Yes, sir. Well, good afternoon to everybody. I have four comments I would like to make. First of all, in regards to redistricting, I've had the opportunity to communicate with various ones in the county, in the Bannister District, as well as others. And I would like to say to everybody and to the board that overwhelmingly, the responses that I have gotten also indicate that Plan A would be the best and most equitable of the plans. So I'm going to put my support in that direction. Secondly, I would like everybody here, as well as the board, to please remember a cousin of mine, Mr. Jack Miller of Gretna, Virginia. And for those who may not know, Mr. Miller was the very first African-American candidate for an at-large position as an elected member of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. He came close, but he did not win. But his knowledge, wisdom, and financial assistance to many people of this area, black and white, will long be remembered and highly appreciated. And also, he is survived by his loving wife, Mrs. Bernice Miller, a former member, I'm sorry, a former school teacher and board member of the Pennsylvania County School Board. Thirdly, I would also like to say congratulations to the young men there in the Boy Scouts. And as a matter of history, way back in 1964, when I was 12 years old, I was a Boy Scout also, troop number 238. I remember.
How about that?
Okay. And lastly, I'm going to also say congratulations to Mr. Jesse Barxdale. It was a hard alt race, but he came out victorious. So as of January, you will take your seat again, and please do the best job that you can do. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Davis.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank everybody that made their presentations tonight. I wish you well. And I wish that everyone will have a very merry Thanksgiving this year. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to let you speak. Mr. Scares. You're up.
Just want to make sure you weren't jumping the gun. Well, first of all, I just want to thank the new elected board members, Mr. Barxdale, Mr. Cheshire, and Darrell Dalton. For the record, every decision I've made on this board has been for the betterment of the county and its citizens. And I'm looking forward to working with you guys and keeping that trend going. I think just about every metric that we could look at for the county has improved over the last five years or so. And I think we've got a lot of challenges to face, but also we have a lot of opportunities coming our way, and I'm pretty excited about all of that. One other thing is, I just want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. I'm looking forward to spending time with my family. I hope you have a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scares. Lastly, I want to thank again Kim and Mr. Bebo from Danville, Pennsylvania County Community Services. What a great organization, what a model for other organizations to emulate. So we appreciate the good work you all do. I also want to recognize one more time, Mr. Barxdale, if you don't mind, standing up and...
Jesse.
Mr. Barxdale, stand up. Mr. Dalton and Mr. Cheshire will be coming on the board in January. We look forward to working with you all. And I want to give everybody an opportunity to get a look at you. And we'll be getting their phone numbers to you shortly because Mr. Barxdale's an old hat add, and he knows. But we look forward to working with you all. And, you know, we do have a lot of, I won't say any kind of problems, we just have opportunities. So again, congratulations on being elected. Thank you. Lastly, I too want to recognize our Boy Scouts that are in attendance tonight. The last time we had a troop in attendance in our old courthouse, there was a young man in attendance. His name was Andrew Cruz. And that hadn't been that many years ago. But I'm happy to say last summer, he reached Eagle Scout. And, you know, for you gentlemen back there, you know what it takes to be an Eagle Scout. And I know Mr. Smithelman knows what it takes. That was one of the things he put on his resume. Mr. Barxdale can remember. He was chairing that at the time, that he was an Eagle Scout. And when someone reaches that plateau, if you look at the statistical data, their opportunities for success in life jumps just tremendously. It's almost immeasurable. So kudos to you young men and kudos to the troop leaders that give of their time to be mentors to these young folks. And they're truly our future and our future leaders, and we appreciate you all being here tonight. And lastly, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And Mr. Myers, it was good to see you here tonight. Once again, he doesn't want to, he wanted to take credit about being a speaker with people behind him and all, but he's an orator. He can speak with them, behind them, in front of them, beside them. It doesn't matter. So we appreciate you being here tonight.
Good job.
So I'll ask Mr. Smithelman if he has any comments tonight.
Yes, sir. And they are directly for our Boy Scouts. And yeah, I do, I'm a year from 50, and I do still put Eagle Scout on my resume. But in order to get a citizenship in the community merit badge, you have to, in Pennsylvania County, you have to be part of a snipe hunt down over at Chatham Hall. So at the end of tonight's meeting, there are burlap sacks and flashlights, and I'll teach you the snipe call, and we will go catch some snipe, and we'll eat them at Thanksgiving. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right. I will entertain a motion that we go into closed session. We had one item left. Did I get a motion to go into?
I'll make a motion.
Second, a second. Motion made. Second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? Please cast your votes.
Ooh, I got to reopen mine up.
Can we take a variable vote?
We can. Who made that second?
Tim.
Okay. All right, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
All right. All right.